It's just exit, exit stage.
Yeah.
Right and left. Maybe I'll set that for like seven o'clock. It was like just straight it was. Changes. Yeah. Yeah, I can imagine. I don't get any idea of this part.
I'm assuming Ken won't be here. Hmm? I'm assuming Ken won't be here.
Yeah.
No, we've actually had quite a few.
They have the funerals tomorrow and they want to get. So they're gonna have the funeral tomorrow and I'm not sure maybe something like that.
Where is he from, Rick? Or where does Ken stay live?
Told me that I forgot, Toward.
Toward?
Somewhere up there.
Really?
I'm saying you should know then.
Huh?
Isn't that your area?
There's a lot of Miller's up there, yeah?
I think, I don't remember.
Actually, my sister's got a classmate and that's, I don't even know what his first name is, I always call him Miller. I think it's Alex. Haven't been updated by takeout.
It's exciting that I haven't talked to you for a week or better.
That's just, you guys just gave a copy of it.
Per minute.
But I'm gonna request to have that.
Not much of an audience today.
I'm gonna add it to when we talk about when we have to ask people additions, instead of amending it, I was like, I'm just gonna ask to add it. Gonna be getting out of the business. And he's gonna be in.
So who's on this?
Well, it's only the end of the three anyway.
Uh, me, this is, you and me and then my sister.
How are we gonna, we're just gonna talk about the folder today.
Right.
Then we still pay that a week.
Yeah, that's what you guys will be discussing.
It's my nephew.
Oh, you know more about it than.
I know all about this life.
All right, nine o'clock, I'll call this meeting on the Mercer County Commission order. First item of business is the reorganization, so I'll turn it over to Samantha to take nominations for chair.
This is the first meeting in January, so we will be taking a vote on the new chairman. Do I have any nominations at this time?
I'll nominate Travis Fry.
Do I have any other nominations for chairman at this time? Any more motion, or any more nominations for chairman? If not, can I get a motion to cease? I'll make the motion to cease. Motion by Liza. Can I get a second?
I can second.
And do I have any nominations for vice chair at this time?
Nope, we gotta vote on that. Then Travis takes over for vice chair.
Okay. And we'll vote on that at this time?
Well.
Liza, how do you vote?
Aye.
Rick, how do you vote?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
That vote passes.
I know Travis takes over the meeting.
Well, I thought we'd do the vice as well and then Travis takes over.
He takes over the meeting, he, that he asked.
Okay. I will send it back to you.
Sounds good. All right, is there any nominations for vice chair?
I'll nominate Jean Wolfe.
Okay, Rick nominates Jean Wolfe. Is there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Seeing no further nominations, can I get a motion to cast unanimous ballot and have Jean be the vice chair?
A motion to cast the unanimous ballot for Jean to be vice chair.
Okay, motion by Jamie, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Liza. Any discussion? Seeing none, Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes. All right, moving on to the agenda. I'd like to add mileage reimbursement rate to other business.
Add what? Mileage? Rates?
Mileage reimbursement rate, yep.
Okay.
I'd like to add landfill land lease. And also Terry would like to add to adopt the policy and procedure manual after his oath of office.
What was the last one, Terry?
To adopt the policy and procedure manual for the sheriff's department after the oath of office.
Okay, anything else? If not, I'll take a motion to accept the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Motion by Jean, is there a second?
I'll second.
Give that to Rick. Any discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, Jean?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes. Approval of the minutes from the December twenty first meeting?
I'll move to approve as presented.
Okay, motion by Jean to approve as presented, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Liza. Any discussion, corrections or additions to the minutes?
The only discussion I had on it was like, I don't remember the the E M thing and nine one one. Am I off of that now?
For the board.
That, that switched. You took road and then I switched and took that one.
It's on page three, Rick.
Who has emergency management nine one one, Liza?
Yep.
Oh.
Yeah, we made a couple of switches, switches that were, that we made who are listed in the minutes.
On page three.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Jean?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
All vote aye, that motion passes. Uh, bills.
I just tried to keep track of all that.
Morning, Dan. No change in chair or vice chair.
We didn't get snow in over there, huh?
I did, because already running a little late, we're never gonna slow beer from the front again, I'm like, I'm not gonna pass.
Nope, no, good choice.
And how was your trip?
Pretty good, I, yeah, you know, leave early, but not there at all.
Yeah.
But ended up being almost two weeks gone.
That's all right, you deserve it.
Interesting working. Couple of good photos.
No?
Good.
Back here at Christmas Day was a little bit of a different venture.
Christmas Day?
Weatherwise.
Oh, yes, yeah.
It wasn't great down there, but it was still, we went, you know, two hours, went cities and back and it was, you know, the fun, you could definitely do it.
There wasn't, yeah, a lot of movement around here.
No.
Will some of these be in twenty-two and some of these be in twenty-three?
Yeah.
Okay.
Cause some issues.
As long as you're keeping them straight.
Yeah.
Sam?
Yes.
What is the S in parentheses, does that have any significance on the vulture, um, claim vulture? I just hadn't seen it before, so.
Yeah, me either.
Was that one and one and a half? That's bigger, so.
It's a horse.
It's a.
Maybe buffalo?
Maybe.
A large hat.
Yeah.
And there's a special attention on incident on a plane, we can.
No, but maybe we should double check that it was, that it was actually for us and not for.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was, it's that, I bet it's that sort of sitting over in the shop because it was sitting along the highway. Causing soreness, that's got Minnesota.
Yeah.
Says it sat on, it sat on the highway for a week or more around Christmas.
Oh. It's causing.
That would cause huge issues.
If it's he's in there or he's in there and so a constitution.
That's the only lease, yep.
It was expired, not expired, chunky, not expired, it was not expired, but it was sour and chunky.
Jamie, that's just a known person.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, it was, um.
Okay.
Were there any nominations for each of this side?
Yummy.
Yep, Rick just made a nomination for Travis for chair, that was the only one. All voted aye. Uh, no, Liza made the motion. Second was Rick.
You're not the only country.
All voted aye.
Okay.
And then went back to Travis. Rick nominated Jean for vice chair. Motion unanimous ballot. Jamie, Liza seconded. All voted aye.
Perfect.
There was no. Jamie's.
Turn this be on the phone. Don't forget to turn it off. People are gonna ask. I don't want her to go to answering phone calls.
Bless you. Bless you.
Great.
How's that work?
It might have an explanation in the email.
Do you have this on your computer?
Yeah, how do you, how do you do it so fancy?
I have.
But you just made up yourself.
Is there also a ledger for what line we have to put it on? Your fun stuff?
It says that pretty much personal vehicle and then it's like.
No, I mean like on your numbers on the side, are those preferred?
These numbers, those are the days of the month.
Oh, just the day of the month.
Yeah, that's all it is. Yeah, the day of the month.
I was like, how are you picking fun numbers?
Just throwing them.
Why number twenty-nine?
Today is seven.
Makes so much sense.
Would actually have a thing on the side where I got the twelve months and then I just enter the month date and it all fails here and.
Why are you so fancy?
Too many years of school.
That's what education.
Work smarter, not harder.
I guess.
And then it actually has my second tab and has the back.
You're good with that though?
Is it a cell?
Yeah, that's where I fail.
Did it go bad, I wonder?
I did a trading at the school yesterday, I was like.
We should revisit this.
I thought maybe this way you could do the agenda today.
It's funny, like, one of the dispatchers is, I'm ten years younger than me and her use of Excel is much better than the majority of us. But I'm like, we didn't use it a lot in school, we used word for everything.
Yeah, so there was, I know some high school kids or recent undergrads.
Body wash is not enough.
How do you not know how to use Excel, aren't they doing this in school?
We touched very little on it even when I knew.
Liza, we even gotta buy you deodorant, body wash is not enough?
Right. Get stinky back there otherwise, Jean.
D O for D O.
Well, you shower every month.
Still, it doesn't help.
Okay.
Those are confined areas.
Okay. I love looking at those receipts.
Actually had a college class for my undergrad that half the semester all we did was Excel.
That would be, I mean, like, I just don't, I, now I have to use it some, but I don't have a use for it in my life.
At least it's cold.
And I think they called Bueller too, and Bueller didn't have any on hand, but Hayes.
It's not cold. It's not cold.
Much of an option. No. Which, are you too old? Could have.
No, 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 no. Because once I'm cold, everyone's freezing.
Quite locally.
If you see me, take more off than you turn it on.
Okay.
Why don't you give us a heads up first?
Thank you.
Why you want, Liza to intervene? Did take off, break off terms. Nancy just got it. Call me names.
Did she?
Yeah, I think it's pretty consistent.
Can't say that I wouldn't have used it. Sweet names, right?
Some of them were quite.
I guess they started filling me up.
No thanks, they're giving me these.
Is that where you have to start?
It's gonna happen. Maybe probably the worst is the cough.
Okay, I guess that happens okay.
Just something bothering me is, I was tired as heck with the cough.
Yeah, I'm sure it would have been a blessing. If you need gas in here in Dixie, you have to.
Or you're in a part of order.
I was just dated twenty-two. They just dated it wrong?
F C, was it F C?
Uh, the wet system should be a.
Federal something. F C, federal.
But it's also breaking, so it's just the same one. That's just the same letter. I know, I'm not sure.
I mean, for Jamie to keep a vehicle?
Yeah.
But it is the assessment, it's the membership assessment for twenty twenty.
Hey, Sam. On this Lewis and Clark Regional Development Council, the front is billed for twenty twenty-three for the year, but their letter is dated twenty twenty and it says there, it's their membership assessment for twenty twenty-two and it's payable by the beginning of January, so I don't know if it's a current letter or if they, they didn't update their letter.
Yeah, I'm thinking that they didn't update their letter because it's our annual
Okay.
contribution.
Yeah, because it's dated twenty twenty.
This is the one.
Copy and paste.
It copy, yeah.
Yeah, I can contact them, send us an updated version.
Well, and like it says the membership is for twenty twenty-two, not twenty twenty-three.
But then this page says twenty twenty-three and then the invoice is twenty twenty.
And we can hold it out.
But this one wasn't.
For the next one, okay.
So what letter that they sent us?
Okay.
I don't think it's like our problem, I think it's theirs.
Yeah, for, right, get a new one that's got the right year on it. Project.
Okay, project.
What?
I think it's still Brian.
Oh, I, I'll think of.
You're thinking social.
Yeah, and there is, yeah. Maurice? Maurice something? I think so.
She used to work here years ago.
Oh.
Yeah, years ago she worked here. When I was still in school.
I've never seen that name before.
Oh, yeah.
It's on here too.
Yeah, she worked here a long, long time ago.
Right?
Is it this one? Did you guys want me to hold this one aside then?
I mean, I feel like it should be probably clarified. If there wasn't three incorrect dates on it, it would probably look so bad, but
Right.
Right.
We're not sure what year we're in.
Well, it's early. It's early in the year.
They still think they're in twenty twenty.
Oh.
Let's not relive that.
No.
We're not changing the date, then.
Who are the real first?
I can resend it to you.
I thought that was, uh.
Oh, you had, that was for who holds, has it? Commissioners. Right, I think it's the state attorney and commissioners. The commissioners, state attorney, all the time. Can send you that.
Sorry.
I'll send it to you in an email.
It was basically W S I S.
Right. Uh, Jim, question?
I think we, like when I was at Cattillo, we prepaid, I got a huge discount.
Oh, really? And some are just, it needs this. And some are just kidding, it's this. No.
Hoping we get a credit somewhere.
I think she can preget somewhere though.
Yes. Yep, I'll reply. We gotta remember your refrigerator, we get charged. He was a private individual, cut line, I won't open, but if it's open, it's the refrigerant in it, they have to hire someone to get it. They can't cut the line. And then they can, like, bring it out, they, I don't know what they charge, it's like an extra ten or fifteen dollars.
I think we just increased it though.
Pardon?
We just increased it then.
I don't remember what it is.
Is it like twenty nine or something?
Something we should, we should ask Candy, okay.
But you can also see why you build up a large stock value before you tell somebody about there.
Because here it's eleven.
It's eleven hours worth of time, wasn't it?
Eleven hours.
That's what I wanted, it's gotta be eleven hours, doesn't it say labor?
Labor tax.
Tax, you wanna, we should, we should ask Candy, but they. Did they charge us per container? In other words, if they did fifty of them, did we charge enough for those fifty to cover this cost? That's what we should make sure that we're getting to know, that it should be costless.
Right. We don't want to lose money.
Exactly.
We can break even our making a little bit.
Exactly.
This week, so I've got a, I'll ask him.
Yes, I'll just touch base with him.
Yeah.
Who has that portfolio? Does Liza have that line of old portfolio?
No, I don't.
Jamie does.
What's up?
Can you check with Candy, we only got a bill to remove refrigerant? And could you check with her, like, if they did ten refrigerators, freezers, or if they did a hundred of them? If we collected enough money to pay that bill?
Oh, okay.
Not that we collected fifty dollars and we got charged a thousand to remove refrigerant, I, I forget what the amount was.
Okay.
To make sure we're charging them.
Okay.
We gotta be getting close to the end.
Cover nine thirty.
Right, usually we get that nice big thing that tells us, you know, it has everybody's.
She's with the, um, uh, with Michelle Anderson.
That's what I was trying to say.
Youth girl.
Youth girl. But I didn't wanna.
Youth girl?
Right.
That'd been the first time I'd have been wrong since nine thirty.
Doing good. Doing good.
I was gonna say youth girl, but I didn't want to be wrong already.
Wrong already, wrong still.
Right?
What's your favorite?
Pardon?
Your favorite one?
Ready?
Yep.
Is there a motion to approve the bills?
Hey, how do, okay, I make, I make a motion to approve the, as presented.
Okay, motion by Jean to approve the bills as presented, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Jamie? Any discussion?
What do we do with the one we polled?
If you just want to make a note that you, that's, that's been polled, and then we'll get clarification on it.
Yeah, the one bill for.
Lewis.
From Lewis and Clark.
Lewis and Clark. We're not approving today, so I don't know.
Yeah.
How to put that in the motion, but.
Okay, any other discussion? Seeing none, Jean?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Uh, Rick?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes. Next we got zoning temp uses from Cindy.
Okay, all of these are renewals, and I have not had any complaints on any of them, but I did just notice on, on six oh two and six oh three, I had this haul road on both six oh two and six oh three, so I have to change that six oh two to the mining, and change the section on there.
Mining, you said, right Cindy?
Well, yeah, it's aggregate materials operations. So I will have to fix that one before I have you sign it. But do you just want to go one through each one, or?
Yeah, just go one by one.
Number six oh one is for Trotter Construction, and that's a scoria pit in the fraction, a fraction of the northwest quarter of section twenty eight, township one forty six, range eighty eight, and like I said, I've had no complaints on that one.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Jean to approve temporary use permit six oh one, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Liza, any discussion? Seeing none, Jean?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, that one passes.
And six oh two, like I just said, should be for the aggregate materials operation in the northeast quarter of section twenty three, one forty four, eighty six, and that is also a renewal, and I haven't had complaints on that either.
So six oh two should say aggregate materials operation?
Yep.
Okay.
And section, and it should be northeast quarter of twenty three, one forty four, eighty six.
On the agenda, oh, it says northeast.
Yeah, it's correct on the agenda.
Okay.
Yeah, it's correct on the agenda.
So it's just a typo you're gonna redo, okay. Motion to approve six oh two.
Motion by Jean to approve six oh two, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Liza, any discussion?
I'm just recusing myself from both Buffalo Sands permits.
Jamie is gonna recuse herself from voting on six oh two and six oh three, any other discussion? Seeing none, um, Jean?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes.
Number six oh three is for Buffalo Sands for the haul road in the west half of the section fourteen, one forty four, eighty six, and I haven't had any complaints on that either, it's a renewal also.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Jean to approve temporary use six oh three, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Liza, any discussion? Seeing none, Jean?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes.
Number six oh four is also a temporary use permit renewal for Wayne Basance's gravel pit, and that is the one in the southwest quarter of twenty one, one forty six, eighty eight.
Motion to approve temporary use permit six oh four.
Motion by Jean to approve temporary permit six oh four, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Jamie, any discussion? Has he started work on this one yet, or?
I doubt it, I mean, that was only a couple of months ago.
Right.
Right. Any other discussion? Seeing none, Jean?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes.
Number six oh five is another renewal for North Dakota Propent, and that's for the sand and gravel mining in the west half of section ten, township one forty four, eighty five. And I haven't had any complaints on that one either.
Is this the one along the highway?
Yeah, it's on the north side of the highway.
Motion to approve temporary use permit six oh five.
Motion by Jean to approve temporary use permit six oh five, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Jamie, any discussion? Seeing none, Jean?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes.
Number six oh six is a temporary use permit renewal from Energy Sand Solutions for sand mining, and that's in the south half of section five, one forty four, eighty five, that's the one out there across the road from Beckles.
Motion to approve temporary use permits number six zero six.
Motion by Jean, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Liza, any discussion? Seeing none, Jean?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
I'll vote aye, that motion passes. Okay, any, any other zoning?
No.
Thanks Cindy.
Are you, do you have the Mann Haven lots on here, or is that somebody else?
I didn't have it on there, but I do have, um, information.
Oh, yeah, I do have the information you got too, I hope you guys can run through that real quick.
Can we jump to that, Mr. German?
Yeah, I think we'll jump to the Mann, Mann Haven lots.
Uh, there was a gentleman that came in and spoke to me a couple of weeks ago, he was interested in purchasing those lots, um, we haven't been taxing them because we don't have any information regarding them. Um, it used to be a town called Mann Haven, um, in Mercer County, it's since, I think, been.
It's no longer incorporated and.
Right, um, so he, this gentleman is interested in purchasing them, but we don't really have any information, I'll let Cindy kind of go through that.
Well, okay, uh, I, I know for, I don't know how long it's been since they haven't been taxed, but they're lots thirteen and fourteen in block two. Um, this book here that I have is from nineteen eighty five, and they for sure weren't in there then, so it's probably a lot longer than that for all I know. Um, and the last people that we, the last deed that we had was in like nineteen twenty nine, and that was to a bank, so. Now, I do have an email here from Todd to Jen where he says that, um, it needs to be put on for tax sale in order for us to put them back on the tax roll. But my question to that would be is how can we treat it like our tax sales that we're doing for redemptions when they haven't been taxed? I don't, I really don't know.
This is kind of one of those unique situations where it slipped through the crack sometime in the last ninety-four years, roughly, I mean.
Well, yeah, because it was, well, I don't know when the last time they were taxed, but they are virtually nothing on any of these, and they're like two dollars and fifty cents a year is what we bring in for taxes on them, so.
My, my question is, if you purchase these, how does somebody get to those places? There's no access to them.
Right.
Yeah, because there's, what I could see on Google Earth, there's no, like, section line trails or any. So for reference, Mann Haven was south of Pick City, it's on the west side of the, it's on our county side, but it's, um, south of the, uh.
Downstream.
The, yeah, the downstream, the electrical plant, um, and.
There hasn't been a residence there in, basically, since the fifties when the dam was built. After the dam was done, the town bas- basically got vacated.
Okay.
Right, and I, this, that gentleman really, really wants these two lots, but like you said, I don't even know that you can get to them, and.
I think we need some more research done on these.
Because when I talked to Gary Emter about it, he had said that there would have to be a title search on it, and I told that guy that, he says, well, that is what he does, but I would think you'd have to get one done by some uninterested party.
Definitely.
But it should be his cost, or I, I don't know, but I don't, you know, this email from Todd saying, take it back for a tax sale, I don't.
Because under a normal situation, if Jean Wolfe doesn't pay his taxes, then you're able to send him a letter.
Right, the auditor's office.
I'm referencing myself for everyone, that's.
After three years, the auditor's office, you know, after, you can only go back three years, have three years of taxes, and then at that time, the auditor's office has to send you and all your creditors certified letters telling them that there's going to come back to the county.
Right.
If they don't pay it by October first, or.
Right.
But I don't know how we're gonna do this one.
You got no one to send a letter to.
And we haven't done it forever, so how do you take it back? I don't know, but I'm not legal, so.
Yeah.
I think we, I wish Todd were here on this one, but I, I think we need to just basically table it or postpone it, because.
I mean, we probably.
We need to make sure, not, not that we think we can go ahead with a sale, and then all of a sudden Travis Frey says, no, I own those lots.
I didn't record the deed, no.
Yeah, I mean, we can do omitted a property or whatever, I think maybe, but I, I still don't know, there has to be a title search.
Yeah, we'll have to do, we'll have to get some direction from legal, because I mean, this is one of those things. I'm, I'm all for getting them on the tax roll, having somebody want them is great, but we just gotta make sure we do it legally and.
Maybe somebody with the dam knows more information about it. Oh, they wouldn't know why we took it off our tax rolls, I don't know.
Well, not that.
We have all the other lots on there. Maybe they know. It's weird. We have all the other lots on it, I mean, there's people who own those lots, like L lines and Cindy's on, I mean, all the other lots are accounted for, except those.
Except for those.
It's like they just disappeared out of the tax roll, but there are people who own them, other lots out there, but they don't do anything with them. Like I said, we don't have any value on them, they're two dollars and fifty cents for taxes.
Yeah, I think we need to get a little bit more direction from our legal.
Is it public information who's requesting to buy them or not?
Uh, Odin Anderson.
Yeah.
From Pick City.
And he was just requesting it to be on the agenda, he couldn't be here today, but, so that way we could maybe start the discussion, so. We knew that it would probably take some time.
Yeah, I guess we'll have to talk to Todd, and I could reach out to one of my contacts at the Corps, see if they have any information, but I.
But, I mean, where these, where these lots are, it's in such a weird, I mean, it's in the middle, so it's not like it would have been underwater.
No, that was never.
No, it's not underwater.
No, not these two lots, aren't, maybe those ones that Cindy's on, Od's along the, along the. Along there, they're mine, but these are. Like way up here in the middle there, these two lots right here in block two. So, there, I don't have, I don't even know when last time they were taxed, that will go be eighty five, and they weren't down there, so.
No, I, I concur with Travis, we have no problem selling them, we just gotta make sure we do it properly.
Right. That's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you Cindy.
Thank you.
Well, I guess we'll probably just put it on the next agenda and get some clarification from Todd. I mean, Todd's direction was, um, similar to a tax sale, but we just have to know how that mechanism works when. I mean, Todd's direction was um similar to a tax sale, but we just have to know how that mechanism works when. When there's no deed on file, or no back taxes because we weren't taxing. Okay. Um, let's go to mileage reimbursement rates. Um, the IRS just updated mileage reimbursement rates for fiscal year twenty twenty-three. Um, IRS is sixty-five and a half cents. Our system doesn't do half cents. Um, so typically we round up to the nearest penny, which in this case would be sixty-six cents.
What is our policy or state right now?
Uh, usually the state adopts.
No.
What's that?
Our Mercer County. What do we reimburse right now?
Sixty-three.
Okay.
And we did that in July because there was a mid-year bump in twenty-two.
So we need a motion to change it to sixty-six?
Yes.
Right.
I'll make a motion to change our mileage to sixty-six cents.
Okay, motion by Jean to increase our mileage reimbursement rate to sixty-six cents. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Rick. Any discussion? Seeing none. Jean?
Aye.
Rick?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
I'll vote aye. That motion passes.
So is that effective?
Active.
Or is it?
The January one.
Okay.
Okay, um, well Candy's in here. We can talk about the landfill land lease.
Candy?
Last Friday. This last Friday Adrian Mittelstein called me. And he's getting into the power business. So and he's got one, one year left on his lease. It was a three-year lease for the um. Elphell Field behind Landville. And so I don't know how you guys want me, he found somebody. That would do it this year or yeah, for twenty twenty-three, somebody that will do this. But the only thing is, is he's on the lease, so he's still liable. So we would, if you guys wanted to do that, we would have to change it and put some other guy on it for the other year or and put it up on bids again. I don't know.
Can, can we just terminate his lease since he said he's not going to?
This was.
He simply.
I, I guess I'd have to look at the lease.
This is how, this is how this gets written.
Yeah, so when Candy reached out to me yesterday to research the information, I found the letter that we had sent out to him. And I found a copy of the lease, but I'm gonna have to dig deeper to find the sign, his signed copy of the lease. Because I looked in all the uh. Obvious places. It didn't come up with anything, so.
Well, we'd need the, the document that he actually signed.
Yep, and I don't have one. I can probably get one from him. But it goes till twenty, and see, he pays it on the fifth, the um, January.
Yep, so I'm, I'm sending him out an invoice still this year.
Yeah.
So since, my only thing is, just thinking out loud, is since he notified. The county now officially and said he simply doesn't want to lease it anymore. Well, then him not making a, he will just not make the payment. Rather than us going after him for the payment, I would say we just re-lease it since re. I can't even say the word, re-rele, re-lease it again. And uh, because there's plenty of time. It's not like it's uh something.
It's not like it's July one, it's January.
So I think we wouldn't have a problem leasing it again. But I think we'd need Todd's opinion on how to do that.
This is a payment for twenty twenty-three's year, not twenty-two. Right, because his, his lease will go until December thirty-first of twenty twenty-three. Um, and there is a section in here, if the lease is terminated by the landlord, oh, by the tenant. Um, so I mean, yeah, of course, we probably want to get this looked at by Todd and also I'll do some more research on.
Does it state in there that the landlord can terminate the lease?
Yes.
We can, it's four ground that this is on, has got the top soil, we need top soil to put on the Alpina.
Oh, well.
That is a thing that we can terminate that lease to get that roof out of there.
Yeah.
Well, then we can, we can just terminate the lease.
Yeah, I guess the direction we would need is uh, it's almost like a sublease if he's got somebody lined up. Or if we'd have to re-advertise. That's my only question, is if we have to re-advertise.
I would, that I would think we'd need to, yeah.
It would have to go out on bids for the twenty twenty-three.
Correct.
To hand it to somebody else isn't probably fair either, I don't know.
Yeah, that, and that's, that's my only question is.
Right.
If we can sublease it or if it needs to.
Yeah.
So we need the official. Termination and then we'll re-advertise it.
That's what our assumption is, but we'll have to verify with Todd, but.
Right.
I don't see what, what other, of course we would.
Adrian must have his copy. I never got one.
Okay.
I wish Todd would walk in right now, but he's uh, and we could make this probably quick and short.
Well, and if we.
Do you want me to run over to Doc though?
If he's here.
Oh. I can go investigate.
Well, I think.
Yeah. We can table that till later in the meeting.
Of course Charlie hasn't given you the new calendar.
Pardon?
I was just looking at the calendar because as being moved ahead a day, did you say it was through the fifteenth, or that's the invoice deed?
Well, he has until the thirty-first of January.
Okay, so we have one more meeting in January.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
The January, it'll be January eighteenth will be the next meeting.
Yeah, okay.
Postpone it until?
Yeah. Till we get legal advice and then if Todd tells us that we just have to re-advertise it, then we'll re-advertise it. And it'll be for twenty-three and then I wonder if we would just throw in the three-year after that, so.
Right.
Either do it for three years or.
But we were, we gave it a three-year once. We didn't have to come back every year.
Yeah.
Right.
So my question would be, do we start a new three-year or do we do a one-year plus a three-year, three-year? But I don't think it really matters.
I don't think so either.
I think we could just start the three-year whenever.
Yeah.
Seven to nine, because it'd be a whole new lease holder, so.
And it sounds like there's interest, so that's always a good thing.
I'll, I'll call Adrian and see if he happens to have a, a copy of that.
Yeah. And uh.
Because I can find one.
Yeah, and, and the next time we do it, make sure we get a copy.
Yeah, but we're looking in there too and I can't find any, I can't find the folder of Landville.
Okay.
To see where.
Okay, we'll add it to the next agenda and.
Got it.
Get more information. Any, anything else with landfill while you're here?
Uh, not really. I guess I have Buckler coming to um do, look at the compactor. I got a, we have a leak and there's plates on there that are really heavy and. They had to use a boom or whatever to tear, we had to tear the whole side off of the thing. And we don't have the equipment or the tools to do any of it, so.
Okay.
And hopefully it's not gonna be catastrophic anything by the time it's done.
Um, we had a question when we were going through the bills. Um, Jean was wondering, when we took out the refrigerant.
Yep.
On, did we collect enough to pay the bill that we had to pay for all that removal?
Well, actually that bill was for two, two different times that they were there. And um, I was kind of trying to do, they did over a hundred units the last time they were there and I'm not sure how many they did the time before, but.
Okay.
I'll have to do some more math on that, but that all went up this year or now.
In twenty-three it's going on?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, because it was, because between labor and trip charge and all that stuff, it was just under two grand. And I don't know if we would have collected enough to offset that bill.
Well, see, well, a hundred, a hundred times twenty is two grand.
Okay, so we're really close.
So, yeah. And it's really hard to get anybody.
Right.
Hundred units, this was two times.
Well, the only concern I had was not that they came out and done and extracted the refrigerate, refrigerant from ten units. And we charged ten dollars apiece for people to bring them out and we get a two thousand dollar bill. Well, that's not covering the cost of the removing the refrigerant. So I just want to make sure we're collecting enough from the person who brings the re, uh, appliance out to cover the cost of removing it.
Yeah.
You follow me?
Charging twenty.
Okay.
And now we're at twenty-five.
Okay.
And then also with that, which, um, well, the refrigerators, they just go in this field pile. But all the air conditioners and that one, they suck the freon off, we tear them down and that's where the, when I haul the stuff to Bismarck. The radiators and all the copper and all of that stuff on there, that's where that, it's just special metals.
So we're getting extra in addition to what we're charging.
So we do get money out of that also.
Typically you don't bring them in until you have a pile of like a hundred of them or so anyhow.
Well, no, we try to keep up on it because I didn't, we had a hundred of them sitting there right before winter and then for snow removal and everything. Takes up a lot of space and fridges do.
Yeah, we're, we're just making sure that we're covering the expenses.
Look at that a little bit more when they come here and see, do more math on it. But what, you know, because we get quite a bit for those fins and stuff and the copper.
Yeah.
And we just, we tear them apart and just hang on to all that stuff and we prepare it so we get more money for it, but.
Okay.
Yeah, you do a really nice job of taking care of that.
Yeah, and then that's the other thing, I guess the um, Gary finally decided he was gonna give me fifty bucks a ton for the, to come bail at the landfill. And I said, no, I'm waiting till spring. I want the price to go up. Maybe diesel fuel will go down. He goes, what do you want? I said, I want sixty. And then he goes, well, you want meat halfway in the middle, how about fifty-five? I said, no, I said sixty, sounds like a really good number to me. I said sixty's better than sixty-five and he finally agreed to it, so they're gonna bail us and we're gonna get sixty bucks done for it.
Nice.
Cool.
Good juror. That's really good Candy, nice.
Yeah, we've been going around for years, us two, so. So there'll be a check on that eventually here. We got a good, pretty good pile. They took almost three loads out of um, out of Beulah. So I think I probably got four.
Okay.
Maybe more.
Yeah.
Because it's pushed in there.
It's not taking up room and we're getting money for it. That's a great deal.
Yeah.
Right.
I'll take it. I do have some other metals to take down to Bismarck, but it'll be a debt.
Okay.
Be free to take them.
No platinum or, no platinum or gold or silver?
So.
Copper's good though.
And say.
Copper.
Which is in, in our paperwork that when Stallion comes or whatever, we've been charging two hundred dollars a box. And I talked to the guy at the end of the month and I said, well, our rates are going up for everybody else. So I said, I'm raising yours too. I said, it's gonna be fifty bucks more. So it's gonna be two hundred and fifty bucks a box. And on an average, they have uh, on an average, they have about a ton and a half to two tons per box is what's on them trucks. So. So that's gonna be a little bit extra. I figured it was fair that, that they should have to go up too if everybody else did.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And other than that, I don't know. I can't really think of anything else. I guess I got the new furnace. Still haven't gotten the bill.
Okay.
And it works great.
Good.
So. Other than that, I don't think I have any.
Sounds good. Well, you answered all the questions we had, so.
Okay.
Thank you Candy.
All right.
Thank you Candy.
Thank you.
Oh, you guys swear.
Yeah. Well, it's ten o'clock. Oh, he must be coming in.
If I can have everybody sign in too when they come in, please, thank you.
Witnesses.
The Turnus clan?
Right.
You didn't deputize them all day yet?
Oh, yeah.
What are, what are, what if we don't?
We might get them on.
Yeah, I was gonna say, but.
We're all.
Well, you're making it hard for us to. Not a lot of you just want it. Dan, no, you have this many friends and family, Terry. This is probably all of them, huh?
Terry, we're questioning how many are left-handed because we've been watching. There's a lot of you that are left-handed.
All right. Glad, congratulations.
Thank you.
At the Santos Farm rental office, if you'd like to raise, raise your hand and read the.
I, Terrence Turnus of Stanton, North Dakota, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of North Dakota, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office, office of Mercer County Sheriff. According to the best of my ability, so help me God.
All right.
Thank you.
We'll have you sign that and you go to.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
I think that's it.
For, for the.
And now I gotta, now I have to address you as sheriff and not all the other adjectives I use.
Now, this is my first order of business is to uh, ask you guys to consider to sign Chairman and the rest of the commission my policy. And then I know that the chair is.
All right, is there a motion to approve the policy and procedure manual um for the Sheriff's Department? Motion by Rick, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Jean?
But I wanna read it. Did I have it before?
We do, we do have, we do have some minor changes. We'll make them available.
Okay.
Probably.
I guess probably.
We don't disagree.
Right, because you know, I'm not saying I, I just don't want to make anything mucky.
Right, um, due to uh, potential or perceived conflicts, um, Liza and Jamie will recuse themselves from, from the vote. Um, but we do have a motion by Rick, seconded by Jean, uh, to adopt a policy and procedure manual. Um, any discussion? Seeing none. Rick?
Aye.
Jean?
Aye.
I'll vote aye. That motion passes. So what's the date? The fourth?
They'll try not to make much more noise than Holly.
We knew you were here.
Yeah.
Thanks Terry, thanks for everybody coming in.
Thank you everybody.
If, if you didn't sign in, could you sign in on your way out? I think there's a couple that snuck in, so.
Okay.
All right.
Go to the state's attorney's office. There's candy for the kids.
Trying to think if we should um, probably take a little.
Sure.
Recession.
Yeah.
We can do that when we get back, because I don't think anybody can.
Oh, true. I got you, got you.
We'll take a recess and come back at ten fifteen.
I'm to the point now where I can make as much money as I want without having to deal with.
You finally get there, huh? I gotta be sixty-six and eight months.
I was sixty-six and four months.
Is it still gonna be there when we're?
Pardon?
I said, is it still gonna be available when we get that age?
Oh, it'll be there, but.
I married a farmer. There is no retirement.
It's called equity.
Sure.
I got a feeling they're gonna move the. I got a feeling they're gonna move the full retirement up eventually again. And I was at sixty-seven, I think.
It's another target, so.
People aren't living that long, so I don't know how they can keep increasing it.
It'll be eighty-one by the time.
Yeah.
Just about made it.
Anybody watch that?
Changing the rules.
Football game?
Part of it.
Just, uh, we were driving and Zach's like, is our internet down? The game's not updating anymore and we got home.
It's crazy because it wasn't even a hard hit. It was just the right hit that caused the short circuit. It's crazy.
I'm just.
You, what is, is, is it still?
There was.
What is his current condition?
It's still ventilated. They're trying to get him to breathe on his own is what I read last night.
I saw it last evening with my last two, I don't know if it's been in the updates.
Yeah, that's what I read last, last, well, I guess it was like midnight, I guess, when I read it.
Well, what he said, he said some improvement in his oxygen levels, but yeah, he's still ventilated.
If there is any good in it is I was just happy it wasn't like a flagrant hit by someone.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
Blindside hit.
Yeah.
It was legal, you believe that?
Clean as you could get. It was.
Well, and honestly, like, he stopped and the guy hit him. It's not like, I mean, it was.
It was as clean a, tactless you could get.
Yeah. But when you re-watch and you, like, you, you do see the impair.
Yeah, the shoulder, I think his shoulder was dead side.
Right. Yeah.
And then even, they were down, he stood up.
But there's a lot of, you know, if they don't do a full, like, cardiac physical, that's where these kids drop dead on the, the field too because most people don't think of a twenty-four-year-old having cardiac issues. Well, he's probably had this short circuit his whole life, but you don't notice it.
I hi- I highly doubt that the actual cause.
And even when we do an EKG, it's a six-second period of time, like, that, that beat could have been on the eighth second and you wouldn't catch it. And realistically, unless you do a thirty-day, like, event monitor, even a forty-eight-hour Holter, you're not gonna see sometimes those.
Well, I got a family member that has, is it called Long QT?
Long QT, yep.
And, uh, the daughter went to do some study and she had it. And they went, this is hereditary.
Yep.
Either your mom or your dad has this. So they went in and got checked and they said, oh, yeah, you're it, no doubt. And it's like every, whatever, six beat that just flatlines.
And even most, like, if you find a, like, a baby with a murmur and you do an echo and they've got a bicuspid valve versus a tricuspid, that's genetic too. So one of, one of the parents likely has it or a grandparent and then it just comes down the line, so.
Yeah, and that's, and that, well, and like with him, this person, he never knew it.
No, most people don't. That's the.
Tell me, they said, you gotta get test. Well, of course, then they wanna do all kinds of stuff. He said, no.
Well, that's how the AEDs kinda got to this area because of Michelle Tipton's son when he passed away from Long QT. That's how, like, she got started with that whole program and is getting AEDs in the area for stuff like that after he passed away. It's, yeah.
Liza coming back?
I think so. Wanna start with Ellen?
I would text her, but her phone is right there.
Yeah.
I mean, you left her coat.
She didn't skip town.
Probably got her keys in the wall under where it works there.
All right, I'll call the meeting back to order. Um, road issues, um, I think most people are aware of Ken's situation. Charlie texted me this morning and said he had something come up, so he wasn't gonna be here. I, I don't see it was on the agenda, but Cindy just reminded me that there was a couple people in the road department that had planned on taking vacation around Christmas and they're over their threshold. Do you know about that, Sam?
Yeah, so.
Yes.
It was brought up to us and, or brought to me. Ken had asked me about it at Christmas Eve. And, I mean, when it states in the policy that once you go over a certain amount of hours, you lose it. He did say that in the past. I guess the auditor allowed him to roll it over and use it the week of the fir-, the first week of January. Uh, but also there was another situation where there was an employee from another department who had went before the board and it was denied that she could use her vacation because of, I believe somebody was sick in her office, so she wasn't able to use it to the last week of, or the last few weeks of December, so. I gave Ken what was stated in the policy manual. Um, I asked him if he wanted me to put it on the agenda. He never reached back to me. I spoke to a couple of the other commissioners. I think we were all kind of on the same, same board that we were gonna send it to the policy committee and have them discuss it, which the policy committee has, um, been discussing, meeting, and I think, what did you guys come up with, the January twelfth?
Twelfth so far.
Yeah. And they'll be discussing that.
So the policy committee will review it and then give us
Yep.
kind of a direction that they see fit?
So did they not get to use their vacation because of the weather and having to work or? Yeah, they said that they had scheduled, um, time off and then had to come in obviously for the weather, yeah, so.
Because of the.
And some of them had requested it way back in March of.
One was in March.
Yeah, so.
Two in, in, uh, November. I guess what, I did a little work on it, uh, twenty sixteen was the zero policy was, was the, you know, the no, the policy to not carry it over was in place. Twenty eighteen is when they allowed the one person to do it. I didn't get the date for when the other department, but both of them occurred after the twenty sixteen timeframe, so, I mean, they did it one way one time and one way the other time and that's why I asked Jean, I see this had to,
Yeah.
the policy, uh, portfolio to take it and, you know, and did us in the right direction, wouldn't go to something.
So what are they allowed to carry over?
Two hundred and forty hours.
Two hundred and forty?
Mm-hmm.
And what's the vacation schedule a year?
Um, they have up until January thirty-first to use their vacation and then, or, uh, sorry, December thirty-first.
December thirty-first.
And then January first it.
And they accrue their hours monthly.
So every pay check, every pay period?
Pay period. Yeah.
Okay, every pay period, you accrue hours. So on these, by December first or whatever date you wanna use, you do not have to carry two hundred and forty hours. So, I, I'm, I'm, uh, as a commissioner, I'm gonna be very, it's gonna be very hard to convince me to allow people to carry hours over into the next year because you can use those hours throughout the year. You don't have to have two hundred and forty hours. And even when I was an employee, we had, had situations where people had more hours than allowed than were allowed to be carried over and they ju-, you just lost them. So, and I know it might sound cold-hearted, but it, I would call it poor planning on your part that you didn't use your hours. Then there's the other argument or statement I could make is apparently you earn too many hours. So if you can't use them by the end of the year, maybe we have to review that.
But in these situations, were any of those employees denied vacation earlier in the year because said, like, other employees were off? Obviously, we can't have the whole department off at one time, so were they, like, denied vacations throughout the year to attempt to use those hours because others were on vacation?
I don't know. I know that one of the employees, this is the second time that this has happened to him. So, I mean, in my, uh, my opinion, I guess you're kinda rolling the dice, especially if you work on the road department and you wait until December to use their vacation. And then another thing that I told Ken is it's hard for me to justify when there were people that lost a lot of hours because they didn't have enough vacation to cover the closures that happened due to the weather too, so.
Yeah, there's.
I'm not disagreeing with you. I just, if, I mean, you can't have the whole department off at one time.
Yeah, I, yeah, I'm just giving all the information. Right.
Okay, well, if the policy committee is meeting before our next meeting, then we could get some direction or a recommendation from the policy committee and that's kind of part of the reason for the policy committee is to try to keep things equal or equitable.
Yeah.
It's hard to be equal, but.
And I did get a chance to talk to the chair and, you know, he did have a lot of insight on how the policy was, uh, changed and why it was changed the way it was. Um, you know, there was a lot of concern over liability due to overtime, um, you know, being, being costly and then also payout if somebody were to retire. Uh, that being costly as well, but then they had brought a lot of information to the commissioners and it took some time to even come up to what, with what they did, but it seemed like they presented it and then it always, nobody could decide, so it just went to nothing pretty much. So it was like all, all or nothing, so. That's kinda how they came up with the, with the current policy.
And two hundred and forty hours is pretty typical.
Right. That's what.
You know, I mean, not just government, but private industry, across the board, two forty is a, is a very typical cap.
And that's kinda what with inclement weather too. They had lots of ideas that they presented, but they were shot down, so.
Okay.
One, one other issue with that, beginning that we're on it too, is the, the policy committee hasn't, I was informed, they hadn't met in almost two years. And something I would like to see is meet at least quarterly or something and look at things and adjust them or whatever. At least have some plan going forward rather than, uh, not doing anything.
I think two years is a little bit of a stretch, but I don't know if they met in twenty-two. Like, 'cause I know there was a couple committee meetings after commission meetings our first year.
Yep, there was. I remember that.
Yeah, we met two years ago.
And it sounds like, uh, if there's a concern that arises, then that's when they reach out and try to schedule a meeting, so.
Yeah, no one's contacted me about it, any concerns, so, until now.
Okay.
Um, on road issues, I know I addressed Rick and maybe Rick, you didn't get a chance to visit with the road depart- I had quite a few complaints from citizens about county roads not being cleared yet from the, before Christmas storm. Mainly like secondary roads. I don't know if you got a chance to address that because there, one of them was the airport road and so that's a major concern for medical to be able to get out there for flights. But obviously, I know Ken has issues or.
I heard there was some equipment issues too during those storms, but I, I haven't had that verified.
I heard that too.
Yeah. Okay. Any other road issues or concerns?
Just tried to give him a little grace because it's been a lot, but
Yeah.
Two weeks later now and roads still haven't been opened, so.
I was planning on stopping there, but.
But then he was gone, yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Well, I think we can start the treasurer's report.
Morning, Don.
Morning. The treasurer's report is just my usual. I hand it out. You guys let me know if you have any questions or if you.
I have none.
If you look on the second page, we are now in the positive for the end of the year, but keep in mind that the reason we're in the positive is probably because of the two thousand twenty-three money that's already coming in.
From the taxes, right?
Yeah. Do we ever distinguish what payments in December or for which year or?
Um, that's, they're often, I believe they have to keep track of them because I think when they get audited, they have to know what came out of what, you know. But as far as what's getting paid out of what, I mean.
Well, I like the total at the bottom. It always looks good in
Yeah.
December, end of December.
Yes, it always looks good in the festival.
And then people have until, what, fifteenth of February for the discount and then?
March first for the first half.
Okay.
And we've got, we've already got one of our bigger mortgage companies paid, so that, that was enough. Um, do I have a question for you guys? I was mailing one of the previous commissioners emailing the month-end stuff that I just handed to you out to them when the month ended, so you had it ahead of time. Don't know if any of you want that. I get emailed to you ahead of time so you can look at it or if you think you need some of the time to look at it. No, but I was doing that, so if you would like me to let me know. Um, you still want me to come in here and do this every month, your treasurer's thing or?
I, I would say add me to that email list and I think it's a good thing, um, to have you come in just to show us where we're at on receivables and where we're sitting. I mean,
I'm okay with that.
This information's not.
Don't wanna take up time that you don't think is.
Yeah. No, I mean, it's.
Add me to the email.
Yeah, just, maybe I'll. Okay.
Thank you, Don.
Yep.
Four. Yeah. It was just a click and add somebody.
Yeah, it's no big deal. I put it in once and just had you guys all sent out, so it's not.
It's always nice to have a little ahead of time, so.
Yep.
Get a chance.
Have we, have we gotten any, um, or did we get our prairie dog money? I'm trying to remember. No, we haven't.
Not yet.
No, I was just thinking about that this morning.
We should be seeing it this month. Yeah. They're anticipating this month. When that is, I don't know.
Right, soon.
Just say soon.
Yep. I did get the, um, the thing from Nicole that she sends out every month that tells us what we're getting for funds, but I haven't really looked that closely at it.
Okay. Was there an anticipated number? I, I have looked through so many reports, but.
Yeah, it went, I believe it went up from one point nine that we were originally, um, sent to two point two maybe. I know it went up.
I thought it went up.
Um, so.
Yeah, 'cause there was one I saw that was two point two and then there was another one that was like two point four eight.
Oh, I haven't seen that one yet.
That we wouldn't take.
No, I mean, no. But I don't know if that was, if that was prairie dog or if that was something road related. Like I said, I've looked through so many
Right.
um, numbers that, I mean, I'm not gonna, nah, it's okay.
There better not be any two point four eight road numbers.
Yeah. Um, did anybody find out from Ken if he had got that RFP submitted to the state?
Haven't talked to him.
Haven't talked to him, okay.
RFP for the, uh.
For the County Seventeen Bridge east of, uh, SAP. One of those things where Charlie had to stay out of it because it's.
Right, he had it back now.
Yeah.
I know that, that the last meeting before that, Rachel was reaching out to me on, you know, where now our official newspaper and stuff was just to get that submitted, so I don't know.
Well, we submit it to the DOT and then the DOT advertises.
Oh, they advertise it. Okay, maybe that's, I didn't know if we had to also put it in our paper.
It goes in the official paper, but I don't know if that's through us or if DOT submits it.
Okay.
I'll ask him.
I wouldn't receive it, but I could, I would see it in the technical paper.
And maybe that's something Elroy or Rachel can look at in Ken's absence if he's gonna take a little leave.
I think we have a little time, but the sooner the better because then we can select and.
Yeah, I'll send Rachel an email after our, our meeting and see if she can give us an update and then forward it to you guys.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Any other questions for Don? I, we kinda did a little tangent there. She graciously let us do that. I don't have any other questions. I guess we'll just anxiously await, um, money from, from the state?
Um, I will start sending you reports in February then, if you're not soon enough to get them.
Yep.
Okay, sounds good. Thanks, Don.
You're welcome.
Well, let's do, uh, portfolio updates. I usually start at one in the end. Wayne was always upset if I picked on him first. Jamie, you wanna start?
Uh, Candy kinda gave her update. Talked to Jim yesterday morning, but he's gone with some family stuff too, um. Nothing crazy right now in his department. There may be something to come, but we're kind of waiting it out for right now. And, um, Buster Langowski was out of the office when I tried to reach out to him. I think that's about it. No other meetings since then.
I think that's about it. No other meetings since then.
Okay, Liza?
I don't really have much either because of the snow and me being on vacation. I didn't get a chance to talk with anybody really. Um, and my meetings are like next week I have a couple or a meeting and then the week after I'm supposed to. But I just wanted to let you guys all know that I will not be at the commission meeting, the next coming up commission meeting that will be out.
Um, as far as my portfolios, um, planning and zoning hasn't met for a couple of months because every time we have a meeting, there's a storm. Um, but hopefully on the nineteenth, um, we can meet. Um, Lewis and Clark, they had their annual banquet last Thursday. I attended that. They're doing pretty well. As you saw, they have an annual dues, um, that we pay based on a mill levy. Um, but Lewis and Clark is kind of a, for people that don't know, um, they do a revolving loan fund similar to what the state does. Um, they've branched out into, um, several things here recently. Um, this last year, they were actually getting into the property management business. Um, Lutheran Social Services over probably a five to ten year period. Um, they built or took over a lot of rental housing throughout the western half of the state. So, um, uh, Lutheran Social Services was kind of getting out of that and Lewis and Clark was taking over a lot of their properties. So that's, um, one of their, one of their other revenue sources to help, um, do low interest loans or grant funding. And they help, um, communities and other, um, public entities, um, do financing. Something similar to like, um, the job development authorities around the area. They'll do what they call a pace buy down where they essentially help pay down interest on loans through a bank in North Dakota. Um, but that's kind of, um, what Lewis and Clark does. Um, so they're, they're sitting pretty good. They've, um, they're eager and ready to start again in twenty-three. And, um, I'm trying to think of the other portfolios I have. Uh, Library doesn't meet till February. And, um, uh, Vision West, they'll meet, um, in February. They have a meeting in, um, Stanley later this month. I don't think I'll be able to attend. I think that's the nineteenth. Um, they kind of have an annual meeting there and then, um, they meet bi-monthly, um, video chat and then the other months they, they usually pick a city within the western half of the state and do their meetings. Um, Coal Conversion, um, they kind of meet as necessary. I don't know if, have they submitted dues to us yet? I don't think we're seeing that go through the bills yet.
I haven't seen it.
But, um, Coal Conversion Counties, they'll, they have a, a list of, um, what they ask from all the different entities within those coal conversion counties. So we should be getting, uh, an invoice for dues, um, for them as well. And I think that's main updates I have right now. Rick?
Oh, for the sheriff's department, um, Terry went through his reorganization thing. We are, um, Jean and I are invited to, uh, along with him, Ken won't be there, but we were to, uh, meet with the CEOs of, of, uh, the mine, the powerhouses. They want to have a meeting on Friday morning about, uh, getting the central people in and out, how they, how we want to see it and how they want to see it. I, uh, obviously I worked with Carmen with the nine-one-one EM position thing and that's changing again in my portfolio, so. But, uh, Fair Board, we, uh, we haven't had a meeting in January. The West Central Human Resources, I, uh, was home, uh, buried in snow, so I didn't, I don't know if they had the meeting or not. I don't know if they, and I did get a, Sam sent me a email on the schedule for up and coming years, so I can get to those. Um, Veteran Services, I stopped and talked with him and he saw he had no issues or problems and things were going okay there. I talked with the recorder and had the same reports there too, but I mean, I will talk with her again. I will spend a little more time with her, but, uh, the social services one I haven't, uh, touch, I gotta get it scheduled on that one too. There's the Social Service Board and the West Central Human Resources.
That all falls under the same.
Is that on the same one? Okay. That, uh, so there was, uh, those where I was at was, uh, what the main ones that I spent most time was with the Carmen with the nine-one-one and Terry with the program. And we're going to discuss that anyway, so that's, that's where I'm at with my portfolios.
What's the date of the fair? Do you have a date?
The fair for twenty twenty-three is July thirteen, fourteen, fifteen and sixteen. I guess we could say we've been working on, uh, we've got a lot of the entertainment, like I think I brought that up the last time. We've got a lot of the entertainment is in place. We've got still some work to do there, but it's an ongoing thing. Advertising at this point, getting that ready. Looking for grants and things for, you know, financing is always an ongoing field to, so. People don't understand is that, um, Fair Board gets a mill from the county, but that is for grounds and, um, the static events only. Doesn't pertain anything to the entertainment side or any of the other things that go along in the Fair Board and, uh, so I mean, we need to be financially in the black, so we're, that's why we're working on that always to keep, uh, that side of the coin, uh, in operation too. We don't use the money from the county for the entertainment at all.
So that, that's why gate admission is so important.
Right. You know, the beer garden funds, uh, food vendor funds, all those things that fall into those, uh, those income sites is what we use to keep it operating. Uh, we do make a little money. People, uh, normally in the past number of years, we've always made a little money off the carnival too. I mean, we, it's a complicated process, but, uh, we do get a little bit out of that too. I mean, they, they show up and they have their own fees and everything. They handle all that themselves, but we are guaranteed a gate for them. Uh, we have to, uh, to get the contract. And we've always exceeded it in the last twenty years, so we've, uh, we've always made a few bucks.
So you guarantee, but then you share in above the guarantee?
Above the guarantee.
Yeah. If the carnival does well, that helps you. If it, if it doesn't, then that takes away.
But the guarantee has gone down. I mean, we used to be thirty thousand and now it's, uh, gone down. In COVID days, it went down to fifteen and now we're at about, about twenty. So I mean, we've, we've exceeded that, uh, the last two years we've set, uh, income records for the carnival, so. Gate fees went up, of course, a little bit. Not the gate fees, but they're, they charge a little more too, but it does, did help on, you know, we've done well that way.
Okay. Jean?
Uh, Road Department, I don't have anything. MACAD, when do they meet? Twenty-sixth?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah. Clerk of Court, we'll see what happens at the legislative session this year. It sounds like there might be some changes coming up. Uh, State's Attorney, everything must be going fine there. Policy Committee will meet on the twelfth and the Weed Board is on, I think about the twelfth also, evening of the twelfth. And that's all I have.
You reminded me of one thing, um, uh, the coalition of cities, kind of Beaver Brigman's been kind of spearheading that. They met, um, right before Christmas, but the one thing I brought up there, um, Jean, when you mentioned, um, legislation, um, one thing that we'll have to pay attention to and possibly address is what the state decides to do with the retirement program, um, the PERS retirement. That's going to have a drastic effect on trying to get new employees, trying to retain depending on what they do with it. Um, so if they, one discussion topic was that new employees wouldn't be allowed to add into the, uh, defined contribution. So we'd have to look at, um, a four fifty-seven B plan, which is the public sector's equivalent to a four oh one K. But just something to pay attention to. That might be some changes that might have to go through the county, the policy committee, you know, the whole gamut, so, um, well, we're paying attention to it. So is the association of counties, so.
I think that if we're on the lines of PERS too, that we should probably start any sort of discussion if it, because I know that there's been talk about switching the Sheriff's Department over to PERS, so.
We might want to do that sooner than later if we think we're going to do that, so. All right, uh, moving on. Nine-one-one EM position. I see Carmen's here.
Yes, yes, I am.
Um, I know we've had a lot of discussion on it. Um, do we have any clear direction to kind of assist us?
Since we've had so many closures and holidays and I had year end deadlines, I have no updates honestly for these, for this, so. If Carmen's got something.
I do have an update.
Okay.
Okay. After talking to Terry and seeing how he's reorganized his office and I feel really good that he will be able to absorb that nine-one sign, but because we got a budget, I would like to ask the commission to keep the EM and then we can look at what we want to do with it next budget period. But for right now, I want to keep it and then train with, uh, the sheriff's office and get the nine-one up and running. You know, everything's set and that's what I'm asking.
The nine-one-one will go to the sheriff's office.
Yep.
And the EM will, will.
I'll, I'll keep it and then we can look at it. I hear there's some interest, I don't know, something going on with the HR. Well, then let's look at it next budget period. Not in the middle of a budget like this.
You want to keep the emergency manager with the auditor duties?
Yep. Saying that we look at it next, next budget period along with the HR, because there seems to be a lot of concerns about that. And that will give us time.
Okay. I just want to go right up front with this one. Um, you won't receive two salaries, one for EM and one for auditor and, okay.
No.
It's gotten us in a pickle in a couple areas, so, okay.
I just want to see how we're going to budget for this nine-one-one thing. That's, that's the one that concerns me because they receive funds.
They do and it's specific funds, right? And Terry is aware of that and he's got that budget, but he also knows they don't receive a penny until I vacate the office. But then there's also, yeah.
And then we have Oliver County and we want to make sure that we.
Oh, yeah, and I've already discussed this with Oliver. I met with the boss. And they're okay. They're okay with this.
Okay, so Terry, I guess just to make it publicly, um, he is aware that he has to keep track of that nine-one-one money separately.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah, and the, if he does combine it with a dispatcher or however he decides to do that with another position, we'll just have to do it like we already do with Carmen.
He actually, yeah.
We'll have to pay their, have their salary out of the general fund and half their salary out of the nine-one-one.
Okay. If we could get something to show us how that's going to affect everything. And I mean, nothing changes until Carmen moves, but what I'm saying is we, we as a board need to kind of know what exactly is going to happen when that drop date date is.
Absolutely has to apply.
And I, and I know a lot of our discussion kind of hinged on when Terry was going to make.
Right, right.
You know, he took over.
And you couldn't really do that.
Yeah, it's, so it's not that we're not trying to proceed, it's just that there's certain steps, certain timing and.
Right.
And I think, I've said it numerous times, we just want to do it right the first time. And not to say that something won't change, but, you know, we want to be seamless as possible.
Yeah, and I'm definitely open to discussion.
Okay, now statutorily, is our auditor able to also assume the EM?
I guess I don't, I don't know either way.
I know the auditor has a lot of authority, but, uh, I mean, I don't have a problem with it. I just want to make sure that all of a sudden we're told, nope, they can't, they can't. That has to be
I haven't found anybody.
Under a different office, okay. I mean, I'm okay with it.
Like I say, I want it, but I want us to discuss it. I want us to look at it, the funds, and that way we got time. And also the HR, that seems to be an issue.
Maybe you'll keep those duties for the next three years.
We'll discuss it. I'm going to make good common sense decisions.
Well, Terry's with, uh, I mean, he's on board with, uh, nine-one-one and I spoke with several people across the county and the consensus was that nine-one-one belongs with the sheriff's office with all the other emergency manager boards and stuff that we do have. I talked to them. And I, I didn't have anybody say that they, you know, that they, they didn't feel that it wouldn't be there. Um, and when, like, comparing with what Jesus said too, that it's not cut and stone that if, uh, and Terry, we, we talked about that too, that if, you know, we, we can, at budget time, we want to look at it again or want to, I don't see us going back, but if we do, it's still, he'll, he'll work with us in what we want to do.
Well, there's no one way that any counties do it. There's, uh, there's a variation of it.
Because the sizes are so different.
Yeah. It, it has to do with budget, has to do with population, has to do with a lot of factors. In fifty-three counties, there's probably fifty-three different ways to do certain things, but.
Yep.
Budgetarily, the way I see it, it, the way Carmen even explained it, I mean, makes it pretty nice and smooth till next budget season.
Right.
Um, operational though is the only thing that I'd, you know, be concerned about.
Yeah.
As long, as long as it works, I guess.
You know, I, I could see the, the double duty with the auditor and the EM for, you know, nine months, but election seasons and different other seasons, that could be, that could be too much.
Yeah, the day-to-day operations of an auditor's office and then incorporating, uh, what is due to the state every month, you have a calendar that you have to, nope, monthly, you have duties that, uh, they send you.
Well, you have duties, but quarterly reports are what we do.
Right, but what I'm saying is you get an auditor's calendar for the year from the state and there's different statutes that are due every month. I think that with that and then also with, you know, trying to focus on updating the software, which has already been approved that we need to look into and then trying to update our HR, trying to incorporate another position into the auditor's office, uh, it's, I'm going to say it's going to be nearly impossible.
Well, we'll see. The thing is, it'll give me a chance to look at, okay, is this even possible that we discuss? Then at least we can look and see. We're not rushing something. We want to do what's best for the county. And to me right now, yeah, then we don't have to hire anybody. We can just look at it. We have some time.
One thing too is like the, I mean, a lot of things we looked at. Nine-one-one was the focus and EM was just kind of sitting over there, you know, I mean, that's an important job and.
It is a very important job.
You know, and it needs to be addressed too. I mean, that's, so I mean, it's either that or, you know, the other thought was, you know, leave it as it is.
Well, I gotta kind of agree, agree with Travis. I don't want to rush into this. I want to try and make it as, as, uh, smooth as we can. Um, and right now it sounds like moving the nine-one-one in the sheriff's department is pretty much agreeable. Our voted-in auditor, sounds like she, she, because it is a she, was willing to hang on to the emergency management for now and that you take office when April first?
April first.
Yeah.
So you're saying this would be a temporary.
If she feels at that point it's too much of a burden, we could even after that point look at something and by then we'll also know how the nine-one-one is working in sheriff's department. So I think for now I'd be okay with just moving forward in that, with that method for now.
Yeah, I still, I still want to, yeah, I still want to see from the sheriff's department. Yeah, I still, I still wanna, yeah, I still wanna see from the Sheriff's Department how he plans on incorporating it and.
Right.
Making sure, and, you know, not that I'm trying to micromanage Terry by any means, but we just need to make sure that.
That it works.
That it works and that those budgetary things are handled properly.
Yep, and that's kinda the point I'm getting at is because maybe in six months from now, we'll be hiring a nine-one-one emergency management person.
Cause Carmen, that's what you're saying, you'd like to keep it temporarily till you take office, till we can see how this works.
It gives me time to train, to get them trained, to see how that's gonna work. And then when I get in, we'll see, we'll see about the EM, but like you said, maybe it's not gonna work, maybe that's what we'll do, but we have time, we don't have to rush it.
I know Terry had mentioned too, that Shelley and, you probably know more of them, I don't know all the names or whatever, but they go by the three-person process to keep all their. Their budgeting in order, and they have, they've already had planned on, you know, how to, you know, this.
So.
Numbers are, are by state law where they gotta go.
Do we need something official here noting that we'll move nine, nine-one-one into the Sheriff's Department for?
I'm not prepared to make a decision on that without information from.
Yeah, I wanna propose it from Terry on how he plans to do it.
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
Okay, anything else on that position, otherwise I got a question or two for Todd since he walked in.
We can throw a bunch of it at Todd now.
Oh, yeah, um, first thing that comes to mind, we talked a little bit earlier on Manhaven lots.
Yeah.
Um, did Cindy talk to, talk to you at all today?
Yes.
Okay.
Cindy and I spoke about this, I've also spoke with a gentleman who's interested in them. What we've gotta do is we gotta go back and figure out who was the actual last owner. It's gonna take some time to go through because the last record, if I'm remembering correct, it would've been around nineteen twenty-seven, that it may have been in a bank's name, there was possibly a foreclosure, possibly a signover, and we figured that out. And then from there, obviously no taxes have been paid, and we can go through the tax foreclosure proceeding. Or if we can figure out what the tax is, now if we go back to, and I'm just shooting from nineteen twenty-seven, that's a lot of accumulated tax. I don't think anybody would wanna come in and buy the tax certificate if that's all added up with interest and everything, because we're talking over a million dollars, I'm a wild guess in my imperfect maths, math skills. But what we need to do is figure out, okay, is there an entity? Because let's say it's a bank that's now owned by Wells Fargo, technically they would still have that interest. Of course, they'd still be back taxes. The Commission can decide, okay, to get back on the tax rolls, we'll waive, you know, taxes from nineteen twenty-seven to two thousand seventeen or something, but, I, I'm just throwing it out. Basically, you as the Commission can decide what you wanna do with the taxes that would be owed on that property, and then we can proceed from there.
And Sandy told us that she went back as far as nineteen eighty-five, that's as far as our records go, I think, on the taxes, and there had, these two lots had not had any, um, they weren't in there, they, their taxes weren't assessed.
Yeah.
That's not saying they weren't assessed before, and who knows, but.
What I'm, what I'm thinking is, is once we get back to the ownership records through the Recorder's Office, we just have to make sure that we have, there isn't somebody who still has an interest. Option two, just declare it delinquent taxes and go through the normal tax sale. But interest of fairness, I'd kinda like to find out if it's something that's way back when, if there is somebody who actually could be, yeah, and this is the, the drawing of it. You know, the city of Manhaven.
Would've been unorganized in the fifties, essentially.
Yeah. It, it essentially doesn't exist except in the memories of, the collective memory of the county. Who knows, some mystery writer might come up with a cool story.
Yeah.
I'd read it.
Yeah, and I mean, like I said earlier, it's ninety-some years of time have passed and.
There's an old house down there.
Yeah, there's, there's nothing there, but, um, who knows, in the fifties, when the government did certain things, it could've been repossessed, or who knows, I'm, I'm, there's a lot of things.
I just wanna check to make sure this has what some other governmental interest, or if it went to some interest that would not be taxable. The third option is something we should look at long-term, is since Manhaven has been abandoned, there's a lot of steps, but we can take it to remove Manhaven. I don't know if it's necessary, it's not hurting anybody as it is.
What about people that do own lots?
Yeah, there's people that own lots based on that description, so.
And they have to have input, but for all practical purposes, it doesn't meet the definition of a town.
Correct.
Or a city, excuse me. It's all, eve- even Manhaven, by law is a town. Fargo is a town. We don't have village, town, city designations anywhere north of, where other states do have such designations.
Yeah, and I, I don't think there's been any vacations on it, so technically the roads are still right of way.
Yeah.
So, like, there could be a process, depending on how this goes, that we would vacate the roads and half of the road would go to each side, whoever owns it.
Or if.
There is no road there.
But it's plotted.
They're plotted.
They're plotted.
Inside, inside the town.
One of, one of the subjects came up in the discussion is, well, it's landlocked, somebody owns land all the way around, well, you can't have landlocked. Even if we were looking at, um, Manhaven being one whole section, the lot in the middle has a right of easement to get to their property. Can't force everybody to become helicopter pilots.
Okay.
Even across private property?
Exactly.
Cause that's the argument they have now.
Yeah, well, they have to have access to their property, reasonable access.
Yeah. You can't deny someone access.
Right.
Well, I know that they got, they got the fence locked, the road blocked, and, I mean.
No, technically it's a plotted street, shouldn't be able to deny access.
You know, there's a, there's another like Thompson Lane that comes from Big City that goes down that way too, and goes into the, across, you know, and across a quarter of, southern quarter of land that gets to the town.
Yeah.
Well, it's been over forty years since I've been near Manhaven.
I spent a lot of time down there, cause they fenced it all up two years ago.
Okay.
That could be an issue down the road, but for now, it's these two lots and, you know.
What we need to do at this point is we need to find if there is any remainder interest that still survives. I'm willing to get ten to one odds that there is no surviving legit ownership. But as a political subdivision, we have to go that X mile to make sure.
Yeah.
My advice is, let's not just put it up on a tax sale now, let's get into that. I've been slammed with trials and blizzards and like everyone else here, so. The criminal trial comes before searching historic records, even though I love the history.
Well, that was the question I had for Todd, is it?
Landfill lease.
Oh, landfill lease.
So here, there's a gentleman that, um, so I, I haven't had a chance to really search deep for the signed copy, but this was the lease that was sent to him and the letter, now he's, um, getting out of the beef business and wants to see if he could, uh.
He does not wanna lease that property this year.
Right. But has an interested party. But has an interested party that's willing to take over his lease until it ends at the end of twenty twenty-three. Like I said, I'll do some more research and find the copy that's been signed by him as well as us.
We used to do it annually, and then we did a three-year lease on this last one, and he wants to relinquish before the end of the third term and.
Yeah, the question is, do we have to just go ahead and automatically put it up for bid, or can we allow this interested party to take over the lease?
It's legal to allow somebody to assume the lease, it's no different than in private business where companies have changes and, so XYZ Corp. is now ABC Corp., they could do that. This, this is a lease that's going that long, and he's still legally bound, and then it would be up to the Commission on whether or not they are going to permit the taking over the lease, cause this isn't a subletting. This would be substitution of, of a lessee.
And we would assume the same payment?
Yeah.
And then if we allowed that, for lack of a better term, a sublease, to become the lesee, then we would just advertise it, um, say, fourth quarter in twenty-two?
Yeah.
And.
If you allow the new substituted lessee to fill off the terms of the original lease, that's perfectly legal. But then when that lease expires, then we have to go through the advertising and all that.
Okay, that was kind of our legal question, could we, and if we could, then what do we do, and it sounds like if there is an interested party and they're willing to fulfill the same payment contractually, we could.
Yeah.
We could move it over for the one year and then do our normal bidding process.
I've done this when I've been with other counties where we have a father and son farming team, dad started, now dad's retiring committing the crime of child abuse by turning the farm over to the kid.
The legal child abuse rate.
Yeah.
Um, would, is there a possible another option of saying we, can we terminate the lease and then put it out for bids again?
We could.
Okay, I just wanted to know.
Yeah, that's a good question. Yes, if he's no longer willing to fulfill, we could do a termination.
If the other guy, the second party doesn't wanna agree to the terms, that's what we'd have to do.
Yeah.
There is a portion in here that says, states about landlord terminating, so.
Landlord can terminate instead of substitute.
There's something about, then the tenant would be entitled to the year's rent, land preparation, and seating costs.
We could waive that as a permission.
I'd wanna see the signed copy because I don't know if this is a draft, if this is part of the negotiations, or if this is the exact wording of the final signed copy. So with just a cop, unsigned copy of what was proposed at one time, whether it was fully accepted or not, I can't give a solid opinion.
Cindy was gonna try to locate the, or Candy, not Cindy, Candy, too many similar names.
The nice thing is that he came to us now in January, cause there's plenty of time, cause this is a cropland, pastureland, hayland, so we got, we got time.
When does the three-year expire?
End of twenty-three.
Oh, so this is the final year.
It's the final year.
Which is not about, you know, switching it in the middle of it, that's good sex.
I don't like the example I gave, if we have a father, son, and, and farm over the kids, it would be unreasonable to say, no, you can't have it because your John, not John Junior, is the one who signed the contract. We are not harmed in any way by the new person taking over, that would be unreasonable to withhold the consents, the substitute. And while it's not a guarantee we get sued and lose, it's a guarantee that we now have an unknown. There's enough unknowns, I don't wanna lead the county into anything more unknown than we already have to.
Okay, anything else for Todd?
That one's, yeah.
Okay, I think that's all we have on our agenda, so we'll see everybody in a couple weeks, meeting adjourned.
Been here earlier, but I had to tend court and then fly by instruments to get here at five o'clock.
Is this, I'm supposed to work. English?
Oh, yeah, it's supposed to be.
I take it with me to.